Good morning, everyone. Okay, so we're gonna have a quick finance meeting, Finance Committee meeting right now, which I call to order for this Tuesday, December 9th, 2025. And it was very simple agenda. I don't think there's any changes. So I will move approval of the agenda for the December 9th, 2025 Finance Committee meeting as circulated. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Now, we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first one is November 18th. Does anybody have any errors or omissions in the first one? Okay, seeing none, I will move that we approve the minutes of November 18th, 2025 Finance Meeting as circulated. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Now, moving to the November 20th, I just wanted to note one thing. It's more of an editorial. And so if clerks can note in, on page seven of 10, second from the bottom, and it's motion 90B-2025FIN, it says to amend motion. It should be amend motion. So there's an A missing. Any other errors or omissions? Seeing none, I will then move that we, whoa, this screen is going crazy here. Move that we approve the minutes of November 20th, 2025 Finance Meeting as corrected. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. And I now move that we adjourn this Finance Committee meeting. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Okay, so now, I will call to order a special meeting of council for Tuesday, December 9th, 2025. And I'm going to start by acknowledging, in the spirit of truth and reconciliation, that we are gathered in the heart of Treaty VII Territory of Southern Alberta. This land is home to the Blackfoot Confederacy, consisting of the Tsitsika, Kanai, and Pekanai First Nations, also the Tsutsina First Nation, and our most adjacent indigenous neighbors, the Stony Nakota, comprised of the Berespa Goodstonian Chiniki First Nations. Further, we are located within the Rockyview Meati District, within the Battle River Territory, District Four. The town of Canmore remains committed to working to live in right relations to advance truth and reconciliation as we acknowledge the many indigenous peoples whose footsteps have marked these lands for generations. I'm grateful for the traditional knowledge keepers and elders who are still with us today, and those who have gone before us. Now, we'll turn to the agenda. And I'm going to table the agenda, then there's three amendments that we need to make. So I move approval of the agenda for the December 9th, 2025 Regular Meeting of Council as circulated. But then I will move an amending motion under recommendation number two, that we strike out, approve the 2026 from that statement as it's extraneous. Anyone wishing to comment on this motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. And secondly, I'll move that, under recommendation six, second bullet, we strike out the incomplete number there, 513644, and substitute 5,136,441. It's just missing a digit. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. And I'll move that we move Agenda Item H2 to the first thing that we deal with, so before Agenda Item G1. It is technically correct for us to deal with the operating budget before we deal with the utilities. And that's the reason for that motion. All in favor? Carried unanimously. So now, back to our main motion. I move that council approve the agenda for December 9th, 2025, Special Meeting of Council as amended. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. So I'll just note in the, in the agenda, it actually says, "Regular Meeting" under A2, and it should be "Special Meeting." Okay. All right, so we will then move first to Item H2, which is the 2026-2028 Operating Budget and Plan Amendment. Mr. Foppel, welcome to council. The microphone's yours.
Good morning, everyone. So yes, 2026 to 28 Operating Budget and Plan Amendments. So the 2026 Operating Budget and 2027-28 Operating Plan. In February 2025, council approved a two-year operating budget for 2025 and 2026 fiscal years. At that time, the approved 2026 budget included total expenditures of $104.9 million, which resulted in a projected municipal tax increase of 7.1% net of growth. The 2026 Budget Amendment process began in August of 2025. The amendment process isn't meant to open the budget in its entirety, as departments are expected to follow their approved business plans, but it provides an opportunity to address any extraordinary or emergent circumstances. Presentations and discussions with Finance Committee regarding the budget amendments occurred on November 6th and November 18th. Finance Committee deliberated on November 20th and provided their recommendations to council. The chart displayed above is a summary of the previously approved 2026 budget. The first column, the second column is the proposed 2026 operating budget. On page 28 of your Agenda package, you can see Attachment 1, which provides expanded details of the above. You will note that the budget expenses have increased by $438,000 as compared to the original approved budget. Not shown above, but shown in the details in Attachment 1 are the fact that municipal taxes are budgeted to be approximately $144,000 lower, and other sources of revenue will be approximately $583,000 higher than the previously approved budget. On November 6th, administration provided the Finance Committee with recommendations for the operating budget amendments. Finance Committee reviewed the amendments in detail and has provided recommendation to council to approve the amendments as provided by administration. The next two slides will summarize those amendments. So we've seen this before. This is the administration recommended budget amendments. So I'll just quickly run through those. Planning, based on current year trends, it's expected that development permits are going to be lower for 2026. RCMP, we're expecting a provincial grant to offset mandated equipment requirement costs. So overall, we're going to see administratively approved budget amendments. We're going to see a budgeted decrease in operating revenues of $30,703. On the expense side, we have cost of living adjustment increase. We previously projected a 2% COLA. The actual data suggests a 2.5%. Benefits, we're seeing an expected increase in total benefit costs. Facilities, utility costs are expected to be lower in 2026. It's a result of removal of federal carbon tax and lower projected commodity prices for natural gas. Planning, we're seeing a reduction in expected costs related to the external contract for safety codes, and this is a result of hiring a internal safety codes officer. RCMP, we're expecting $100,000 less cost there. This is based on a multi-year financial plan received from the RCMP, and a projected decrease in $100,000 in that contract compared to what was previously budgeted. The last two items on this page are the Cougar Creek Retention and Structure Operating Budget. The original budget did not consider all of the annual costs associated with that structure. And finally, the snow management facility. The budget originally contemplated that we would have, that that facility would be under construction in 2025, and we would have debt taken before the end of the year. As no debt was taken, there is no debt repayment requirement for 2026, and so therefore, that payment has been shifted to the 2027 budget. Continuing on, the other two administrative operating budget amendment suggestions with no tax impact include the franchise fee reduction of $190,000. This franchise fee reduction is based on calculations provided by both Adco and Fortis. There is no impact to the tax levy as this franchise free revenue is transferred to either Sustainability Reserve and Asset Replacement Rehabilitation Reserve. And the other budget amendment with no taxing impact is the increase in development, economic development business license revenue. There's no impact as a result of the increase in expenses, and the fact that the net surplus in this program is transferred to the Economic Development Reserve. Now, in addition to the recommended operating amendments provided by administration, Finance Committee has made further operating budget amendments recommendations to council. These recommendations reflect operating budget amendment options that were provided by administration, as well as suggestions made by the Finance Committee itself. The next slide will summarize those. So there's three of them. The Finance Committee recommended operating budget amendments, including an increase to the community grant funding of $10,000 to bring the total community grant starting in 2026 to $50,000, to add a government relations senior advisor position to the executive office. This budget includes salary, wages, travel, and conference fees. And the third item is to increase the annual funding to the Rotary Canada Day Pancake Breakfast by $2,000, bringing the total funding to $12,000 starting in 2026. Note that all these increases or additions are funded from property taxes. Okay, so to summarize, the 2026 operating, proposed operating budget amendments, Finance Committee recommends amendments to previously approved 2026 budget. These changes bring the total operating expenditures to $105.3 million, and the net anticipated municipal tax increase is 6.7% net of growth, opposed to the previously approved 7.1%. This chart here summarizes the impact of the general municipal tax increase on a median residential household assessment of $1,076,000. The increase is approximately $142 per year, or $12 per month in that case. Just to note that this reflects changes to the municipal tax rate only. Actual levy will vary due to assessment changes and requisitions, of course. Just a quick note on the livability tax program. The livability tax program budget is included in the overall operating budget approval. It is separately tracked from the towns' operating capital budgets. After funding internal program expenses, as well as corporate transfers to other departments for program supports, net revenues fund housing action initiatives, as well as a livability program reserve. Note that the projected revenues from the program for the 2026 to 28 fiscal years are $31.3 million, or $10.4 million per year. After expenses and transfers, there will be an estimated $28.2 million available for housing action initiatives. Page, or Attachment 3 on page 30 of your package summarizes livability tax program budget. Livability Tax Program, pause or modify. Counsel may choose to pause or modify the livability tax program before the 2026 property tax rate bylaws pass. Opportunities for this pause include following any legislative changes impacting the program, following any court decisions impacting the program, following the report and recommendations of the Property Tax Task Force, which is expected to be brought to council in March or April of 2026, and with the presentation, and at the time of the presentation of preliminary mail rates, which is expected to be brought to council in April of 2026. So with that, if there's no questions or comments, I'll turn it back to Mayor Croser to, for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Foppel. Looking to council to see if there are any questions. Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, so I'll move that council approve the 2026 Operating Budget, tax-supported and utility-supported, of $105,340,351, and the 2027-2028 Operating Plan as presented. Counselor Fober, do you have an amending motion that you'd like to bring?
I have a motion that I'd like to put forward. One last go at this one. Since we're at the council table, I'd like to move that council add $50,000 to the 2026 Operating Budget for childminding at Elevation Place with funding from the Tax Stabilization Reserve. The reason I chose the Tax Stabilization Reserve is that it would mean, it would mean that there would be no changes needed to the current operating budget before us in order to move forward today. It would have no impact on taxes. And one of the reasons why I wanted to do this is because I wanted to take a different approach at this issue that I think I, at the last count, time we debated it at Finance Meeting, I hadn't gotten my mind into, I think, a place where I could fully express one of the reasons why I felt so strongly that we should keep it in the budget. And that's because I'm not sure that, there are two arguments around removing this from the budget that it's in. One is around usage numbers, and the other is around cost recovery. And from a cost recovery perspective, I 100% agree and understand that we run recreation through a cost recovery policy, but I'm not sure that childminding in a recreation facility is, should live within a recreation world or a recreation cost recovery policy. It, to me, is more like the Family Resource Network and Family and Community Support Services in the Community Social Development Department. And so I wanted to just argue that if we took a different approach and a different perspective on what, where this type of service level lives, it might change consideration around what type of cost, like whether or not cost recovery models are the thing that we should be applying to this type of service in a recreation concept, from a recreation space, right? And that might not sway my colleagues, and I understand that, but I wanted to get it out there because I think that, that to me has been part of the challenge on this one, is, is that I completely understand why, from a recreation policy and a cost recovery policy, that this would come forward this way. But maybe, and I think it's a council, it's within our role to say, well, maybe that's not the right place to put that service level, and if we put it somewhere else, it makes more sense. The other is the numbers and usage, and I feel that if we look forward in our community, there is a lot more growth and a lot more families. And this is a service level that aligns not only with our strategic plan, but with our values as a community in supporting values, in supporting families, and supporting recreation, and access to recreation, and access to different, for different groups who have different means to be able to enjoy all of the services and the wonderful things that we offer at Elevation Place. So, that being said, if we're not successful, if I'm, if this doesn't pass, I'm hoping that after the budget conversation, and I think there will be, I think it's worthwhile for us to turn our mind to childcare, and because this, this, oops, I believe this issue and this debate, while is about childminding, which is different than childcare in our community, it's adjacent and attached and has, I think, reopened up sort of that, like where do we fit within, like providing childcare or supporting childcare services in our community, which I think is really important role for us to fill. We already do that. We offer an entire facility for the daycare and the preschool. So I'm excited, that to me is a really great way forward, as long as we keep the conversation going. And I look forward to what my colleagues have to say.
Thank you, Counselor. And I do appreciate that in your bringing it back, you actually added additional arguments rather than just simply going back to what we already discussed. So I really appreciate that. I'm still not able to support it, and I'll speak to that a little bit here. First of all, I want to set straight some misunderstanding that is spoken to in the community. The term "childminding" maybe is a little bit too much like childcare, and people are seeing this as childcare. It's not. It's babysitting. It's babysitting while people use the, use Elevation Place. So it's babysitting while those, while members, those who can have memberships can use that. And so we're really talking about continuation of babysitting while people are exercising, at a cost to the taxpayer of at least $50,000 a year. I just don't see how that's justifiable, based on the numbers. And while we don't know the exact numbers of unique individuals, I, there's a number of indicators that I look at to suggest what those numbers may be. First of all, we look at the usage numbers, and we look at this, the service, and people that would be using the service. That's, the numbers that are actually used, that's like 100 people using it once or twice a month. Maybe it's 50 people using it once a week or less. Social media, we see a group that has formed to coalesce around this topic, and there's about five dozen individuals there. Some of them may be from the same families. We look at the letters that we've received, and I'm putting it in the range, and maybe I'm being erring on the high side, but maybe two to three dozen letters. We look at the protests that was outside the civic center, the gathering, peaceful gathering, and we're talking about maybe 20 adults at most. All of these indicators suggest that the number of actual users for this service is somewhere between 50 and 100. At 50 people, that is $1,000 per user that we're paying. At 100 people, that's $500 per user. I could justify, if we got down to the spot, that maybe we're about $50 per user, but I can't justify somewhere between 500 to $1,000 being paid by the taxpayer for babysitting children of 50 to 100 people. And so for that reason, I do not support this motion. Would anybody else like to speak to the motion? Counselor Ma.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Counselor Fober, for bringing this up and, you know, looking at it from a slightly different angle. I think there's some interesting points there. I feel Mayor Crocer did a pretty good succinct evaluation on the numbers behind this all. I don't think this is the sort of decision that's taken lightly by anyone on council. You know, obviously, many of us have families, and we understand, like, the challenge of it is, you know, when you're raising kids. Having said that, in addition to the financial argument that Mayor Crocer'd make, there's also the functional argument of the space. Like, what you say yes to, you say no to something else. And this space can be utilized for other ways. And in fact, we've actually used this space for some targeted child programs. For example, we've modified it, so we've had some programs for underserved cohort for, I think it's age three to four. We've had day camps. There's more opportunity for these sort of elements as well, too, which is not just for members of EP, but across the broad community. So I think this space also has potential to help meet some of these child issues that we're dealing with in our community, and I think we should allow those to happen. Thank you.
Counselor Maron.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you.
And thank you to my colleagues and for Counselor Fober for bringing this forward and having a different angle. I hear what everybody's saying. I am going to support this motion by Counselor Fober. I understand that the numbers don't necessarily make sense. I would like, I do think that there is a community support here that is important to the community just in general as far as that community support element. I would like to see this continue for another year. I'm not saying that it should continue forever, but I do think there's an opportunity to have it go for another year, look at what those numbers are, see the usage now that there's been more attention to this program. So, understanding the different perspectives coming from my colleagues and completely respecting where they're coming from, I will support the motion by Counselor Fober.
Counselor Hillstad.
Thank you. Again, thanks for bringing this motion forward. We've already given it another year. Originally, we were going to close it last year, but we extended it to this year to give that time so we didn't just abruptly shut it down after the previous council's Finance Committee when this first got brought up. Another thing is that, yes, this serves those that can afford to use Elevation Place. There's a lot of families that can't. I never used this service because we never had a membership at Elevation Place. We couldn't afford the privilege and the option to even go use Elevation Place and then childminding at the same time. If we did go to Elevation Place, we all went as a family and maybe went once a month to go swim. So, yes, there's a lot of families in our community that would probably just like the opportunity to be able to use Elevation Place. So, and some families are, have that option where they have memberships and they could have used the service. But I know a lot of families that they can't even use the facility. So, again, does it serve everyone? No. Does it serve a specific group that can afford to use it? Yes. Again, childcare and any child-type services are hard to find in this community. There's, you know, I've seen some people, you know, talking about potentially making groups of, you know, doing it old-school, back in the day like our, you know. I remember getting together with friends where, you know, parents would look after the other kids so that they could get away and go do things. So, again, is this a perfect situation? No. Would I like to keep the service going? Yes, but as Mayor Krausler's pointed out, the numbers don't add up. So I won't be able to support this at this time.
Counselor Murray.
Thank you, Your Worship. I am prepared to support this motion. And thank you, Counselor Fober, for bringing this forward for many of the reasons that, excuse me, both Counselor Fober and Counselor Marin have already indicated. I do like the idea of funding it out of reserve rather than putting it onto the operating again. But I do see a reserve funding as more of a, it's not a perpetual thing that we would be doing. This does sound like something that we would continue for another year. I would love to see us take a holistic look at childcare, childminding, and the role the municipal government has to play in this. And that's not really what this motion speaks to. But this motion is more, do we continue this program if we decide to take a more holistic approach? Or do we leave a gap in service? I'd rather not leave a gap in service. You know, we talk about passing status quo budgets, but really, at this point in time, we're taking away a service level and we're not really replacing it with anything. So I would love to see this continue while we consider, potentially consider other options for the families who really value this service, and there are a lot of them. Thank you.
Counselor Graham.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm actually not appreciating this motion at all. We've discussed this.
Just a second. Counselor Fober.
Is that, just a point of order, I'm allowed to make a motion?
Certainly.
Okay, so perhaps not making a judgment on the motion being brought, please.
We've discussed this time and time again. This has been debated back and forth for several years now. This isn't a decision that's been taken lightly at any of those points in time. Funding it from tax stabilization isn't appropriate, in my opinion. We need to make hard decisions. We've made these several times now. And having to bring this one forward again, I'm unable to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before going to Counselor Fober to close, I will note that, you know, this issue has sparked some conversation amongst a certain group, and it touches on the larger issue of childcare within our community. So, after we've dealt with the operating budget, if this motion is not successful, or perhaps even if it is successful, I intend on bringing a second motion about committing counsel to a, some time during our strategic planning to determine what our role is, if any, with regards to increasing childcare spots within the community. Counselor Fober, would you like to close?
Thank you to all my colleagues for the consideration, especially given that I tried to come at this from a newer angle and just really expand on some of the thoughts and considerations around this issue. And I'm really, also, I completely agree with everything that you just said, Your Worship. And I think that that is, that would be a win as well. That would be a win as well. So, thank you.
There are no other amending motions? Was that captured? My mic was off there. Was the vote actually captured? I should say it again for the purposes. The amending motion was defeated with Counselors Fober, Murray, and Marin in favor. And I had just asked if there was any other amending motions, and I didn't see any. So now, speaking to the main motion, which is the operating budget and plan approval, I will be supporting this motion. We've taken a step in the right direction from what was previously approved. And the right direction is always, you know, trying to be as fiscally prudent as possible. And we found some, well, administration has found some savings and the situation has changed with some savings. So we moved from what was a previously approved 7.1% approval down to a 6.7, or not approval, 7.1% increase to a 6.7% increase, which is about, for the median-assessed home, just shy of $12 a month. So I appreciate all the work that has gone into this by administration. I appreciate all the work that the Finance Committee put into looking at the operating budget, and I will be supporting this. Counselor Fober, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Your Worship. Thank you. I'm going to be really brief. The uncertainty created by the livability tax causes too much uncertainty for me. And I'm going to not support the budget at this time. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? See none? All those in favor? Those opposed? The motion is carried with Counselor Fober opposed. Okay, so now we will go to the top of our agenda here, or to G1, rather. And this is Utility Rate Bylaw Amendments 2025-38 and 2025-39. Mr. Como, welcome. And whenever you're ready, the microphone is yours.
All right, good morning, Mayor Krausler and Council. So just in front of council today to discuss the 2026 utility rates, I shared with council during the, or during the Finance Committee, quite a bit of detail was shared and discussed with the Finance Committee. So I have just pretty much a summary of that discussion. So to allow that to work, there's a number of, my apologies for that, amendments to allow that to take place. I'll have that up again at the end. But basically, the current rates, and there are rates for 2026 currently in place that will take effect January 1st, that were approved back in December 2024. But as shared before, there's been a number of significant changes to the utility that has required us to go back and revisit the impact it's had on the utility and discussions about increasing those rates. And namely, those big changes are the addition of the wastewater treatment plant order control project, Phase 3, which was approved, but had an impact on the utility back in October. And then we also have proposed cost increases for the railway avenue deep utility work that's in front of council. And then we had our wastewater treatment plant effluent upgrade scheduled, and we had a cost estimate. And we have increased that cost by looking at 2025 rates. And so that's had a significant increase as well. So all of those together have had a big impact on the utility. This was a table or graph shared with council previously, sorry, at Finance Committee. And you can see there that the intent, when we look at the utility rate model, is that we get above our utility reserve target by year 5, which currently is, will be $8 million. And just if we zoom in a little bit more, you can see with what's being proposed today would get us to that figure by year 5. And you can see that there in more detail in Option 2, the direction we were given by Finance Committee, which was to go with a 20% revenue increase in the utility compared with the current 16. And then, I'm sorry, yeah, you can see there in the fall, right corner there, basically $8 million by year 2030. So then the impact on the ratepayer going from 16 to 20%, is again, that is trying to be a different shade number there. But from the increase is an additional $5.30 a month is the impact with that change. And so these are the rates. As you can see, our 20% increase in revenue equates to about an 18.6% increase impact on the residential ratepayer. And the same thing is extended to the commercial sector, 18.6%. And I also include down there at the bottom what we are projecting for '28 and '29 and down the road. So it starts to go down. We just need this big bump, then we can get that compounding benefit of that for years to come. So with that, there's our administration's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Looking to see if there are any questions. No? Thank you very much. As you mentioned, this was a summary of stuff that we already were aware of and have looked at. Just before moving to these motions, I just want to give a heads up to everyone. Once we're done these motions, we're going to do a little time travel back in time to do a motion arising on that previous one because I skipped over that. I said it was coming, and then I skipped over it. So we're just going to do a little bit of a time travel back for that. Hopefully, the news will catch how incredible this council is that we have even conquered time travel. Counselor Fober.
You, these aren't on the table yet, so you could make your motion before you made these motions, if you wanted to procedurally.
That's a good point. Okay, so, actually, they won't have to change all the computers and everything.
That is, that, that is, sorry.
That's a good point. Besides, I wanted to time travel. Okay, so, we've got a number of motions here to give effect to the proposed rates. So I'll first move that council give first reading to Water Bylaw Amendment 2025-38 Rate Adjustment. Anyone wishing to speak to that motion? I'll just say in response to all of these that rate increases are not a fun thing to do. They're also not a, something that we take lightly. However, we have to be prudent and we have to manage our utility in a way that ensures that we have the reserves needed in order to keep the system functioning and functioning well. We have some big costs coming up. And so we do have an increase. And it is going to be, you know, it's going to be about $25 a month. And that's, that's not light. That's out of all of our pockets. And this particular increase is about $5 a month more than was previously forecast. But Mr. Como spoke to those things that have changed. So we don't take rate increases lightly, but they are necessary. And so I will be supporting all of these motions. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Counselor Graham.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, too, will be speaking in favor. And no, we don't take these rate increases lightly. You know, these are coming at us because of provincial regulations that have put a significant capital project on our plate in the coming future. You know, without that, this rate increase would probably be around the normal side of things. But I just wanted to highlight that that fact is, that's why we're having to do this. And having those capital reserves in there allows us to take less debt than we would otherwise. And I can fully support that idea. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, Counselor. And you are correct, a good portion of this is due to that. Of course, with regulation changes, there's also the argument to be made that as we know better, we do better and regulations follow suit. And so it just happens that we have a system that is not able to handle the regulation change as well as others. And it is true that our, we're pretty close to meeting it by our estimates, in any event, with what we're doing. But it doesn't meet the regulations, so we do need to move forward with the project. You are correct, though, it is a big chunk of this increase, yeah. Counselor Ma.
Thank you, Your Worship. When it comes through Finance Committee and we look at all these other things and as well as utility rate, we kind of run the whole gamut from things that are nice to have to things that are really important to things like this, which is non-negotiable. I think in my, coming into my second term, I never really thought I would see a capital project in the span of like over $100 million, which is what we're going to have to create with our new wastewater treatment plant. $103 million, fingers crossed, we can get some grants, et cetera, with all that. But it is a huge item. It's a huge lift. And it's going to take, you know, some challenging rates to get to that point where we can actually afford this absolutely essential, non-negotiable service for our community. And so this is the manifestation of that. As Counselor Graham noted, as our people noted, this is not an easy thing to take. I'd also say, you know, if you're a constituent living in the Bow Valley, you really contemplate your water usage. Take a look at your bill. There's probably some ways you can, like, mitigate your water use and kind of temper that sort of hit. And there's a bit of an environmental benefit as well. So just some thoughts for that. Yeah, it's a big one.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? See none? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. I'll now move that council give second reading to Water Bylaw Amendment 2025-38 Rate Adjustment. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? See none? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. I'll move that council give leave to go to third reading of Water Bylaw Amendment 2025-38 Rate Adjustment. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. I'll now move that council give third reading to Water Bylaw Amendment 2025-38 Rate Adjustment. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? See none? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Moving now to the next bylaw. Moving now to the next bylaw, I move the council give first reading to sewage use bylaw amendment 2025-39 rate adjustment. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. I move the council give second reading to sewage use bylaw amendment 2025-39 rate adjustment. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Move the council give leave to go to third reading of sewage use bylaw amendment 2025-39 rate adjustment. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. And finally, I'll move the council give third reading to sewage use bylaw amendment 2025-39 rate adjustment. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Okay, now we're going to do our little time travel. We're going to go back to under the H2, where we approved the operating budget. I'm going to make a motion arising from that discussion, and that is that council commit to consider during its 2026 strategic planning, the town's role, if any, in increasing the number of childcare spots available in the community. Childcare, as we know, is essential in every community. It is under provincial jurisdiction. We do have an assessment that says we are in low need, and the reason that we're in low need is because many communities are in a higher need. That doesn't mean that we don't have need. In fact, the assessment that was done a couple of years ago doesn't take into the fact that in this community, many parents have, not only have to both be employed, but employed with multiple jobs. And, and so our childcare need is absolutely crucial for people to be able to earn a living and be able to make their families home here. So it is an important discussion for us to have, and to take a look at what, if anything, that we can do to increase the number of childcare spots available in our community. So I'd ask you to please consider supporting this motion so that we can have this discussion during our strategic planning session that's coming up in the next few months. Counselor Graham, speaking to the motion.
Thank you, your worship. Actually, a question for you. In your mind, does childcare also include childminding or babysitting, as we talked to earlier today?
I will use it as the all-encompassing. I am really talking about the crucial role of childcare. I'm not talking about babysitting specifically, but it's open for that to find its way into the conversation.
Thank you.
Counselor Fober?
Thank you, your worship. I will speak in support of this motion. I am really grateful that we're at a point to discuss as a council and to create direction for ourselves, and thus signal to the community that this is an issue that we are going to be setting our minds to. To me, if we have a better and more robust childcare in our community, we wouldn't need potentially childminding at Elevation Place. So to me, it is connected. I don't necessarily see it as something that's going to result in re-establishment of a service level, per se. However, I do think that doing what we can, and not necessarily provide, like, I don't think that means we provide daycare or childcare, but doing what we can at our level and looking at the options available to us to support this in our community is going to be vital. And this is, this is economic, and this is social. This hits on two areas, I believe, of the, the area, places where we focus on when it comes to the well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Murray?
Thank you, your worship. I'm definitely prepared to, to speak in favor and vote in favor of this particular motion. I, I feel the conversation around childminding to this point has been a bit of a binary choice. It's either childminding at Elevation Place or nothing at all. And so I've, I've been actually kind of hoping to advance this type of conversation as well as a rookie counselor. I, I was kind of trying to figure out the best way to do that, but strategic planning, as you've suggested here, seems like a really perfect spot for that. There have been a lot of people who have spoken to, you know, when it comes to childminding at Elevation Place, the real need in our community for some sort of service for families that is no longer going to be available in, in this particular model. And perhaps it was a business model that was not working in a lot of ways, but maybe there's something that does work, that is within our municipal purview, and I would love for us to explore that. And I would love to see, to show the people that were speaking out about childminding at Elevation Place, that even though that particular business is going to be closing, you know, council is listening, and, you know, their voices are being heard. The effort they put into this was, was not a failure, that we, that we are going to be really looking at this from a holistic angle, and hopefully come up with something really great for families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marin?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to all the parents that have communicated with us over the last few weeks, just with the letters and the people who gathered at the civic center on Friday, and further to Counselor Murray's point, we have definitely heard you. I did not anticipate in my second month as a counselor that I would be advocating for childminding. I'm not a parent. I don't use childminding, and I don't need childcare, but I do think it is absolutely essential to our community. So I'm encouraged that this will be part of our strategic planning discussion when we meet again in January. So thank you to those parents that have reached out.
Thank you. Counselor Ma?
Thank you, your worship. And yeah, great motion. I think organically, we probably would have in January, when we got to speaking about our strat plan, childcare would have been a topic that came up, but this signals to the community that, yeah, it is a priority. You know, when it comes to the childminding piece, I think many of the counselors on this dais here have gone through that. I remember when my partner first started working her job, getting back into workforce, I think like over 50% of her income was completely just to like daycare, so that she could continue to like somehow move forward in her career at the beginning. I also think in terms of the childcare piece, maybe we do have a role there, but also I wanted to just note that, you know, between this council and administration, there's been a lot of stuff that we do, and we try to lessen the burden when it comes to child support. Like, the big fund camps that we've been doing perennially, they're huge. When the strike came through for the teachers, you know, and men pivoted, you know, there's programs there. And likewise, you know, we've seen like new programming coming into the childminding space in the previous year for like three and four-year-olds. Like, I do think there is like a commitment to this, and this will just help us crystallize that further, and maybe just more stones we can unturn. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And just to add on to that frame of, or that vein of thought, we also currently support childcare through the Roundhouse, providing that facility and maintaining it. So, you know, and that is the, the largest source of childcare spots in our community. So we're, we're already involved in this. It would be a discussion to see how, what, if anything, we can do that's more than that. Counselor Hillstad?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this motion forward. I'm happy to support it. Again, as, as you've already stated, and everyone else has already stated, like, the town does a lot, more than, you know, what we're even told to do. So we've already stepped out, and we've done things like the Roundhouse. We've, we, we do many things, so I'm happy to look at other options and see if, if there are ways that we can help increase childcare spaces in this town. I know we've allowed daycares and more spots within the land use bylaw. Like, that's one way that we can make changes, but again, that usually requires a private entity to come forward and step up to the plate. So we are trying to do things, and sometimes it's just what the market will bear, and if there's ways that we can help improve what the market will bear, I'm happy to look at those.
Thank you. Counselor Graham?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to the rest of my colleagues for speaking well to this one. You know, I am a parent. There was a time I was a single parent, and I live across the street from, from a daycare. I, I see the demand and the need. I know how challenging it is through that, through that segment of your life, financially, socially. You know, not being able to support the last motion doesn't mean that, that we don't want to support families, and that we don't want to support children in this, in this community. I think we almost very much do. So I, I'm grateful for you bringing this one forward and to putting a little bit of our focus at the strat pound to, to addressing this, this need and this issue, and signaling to the community that we do take this very seriously. There is our role for us to play here. The province does play a significant role, as do the feds a little bit, but happy to support this, happy to have the discussion, and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. We're going to take a break now and return at 10 after 10. We're going to take a break now and return at ten after ten. When we're back on. We're gonna get, we're gonna get going here. Streaming's gonna start. Okay, we're back. All right. We're now going to move on to H1. 2025 Capital Budget Amendments and Cancellations. Mr. Fabel, once again, the microphone is yours.
Thank you very much. So, yes, 2025 Capital Budget Amendments and Cancellations. Firstly, the budget amendment policy stipulates that capital project carryforwards should be minimized, and the policy also stipulates criteria for project carryforwards. Based on review of active projects, the following four projects are recommended for cancellation. The first being the NRCB review Silver Tip Gondola, Gondola Project. Administration is recommending canceling this project with understanding that it may need to be brought back in the future if consultations are announced. The long-term financial strategy update. Since time when this project was put forward, work has been undertaken for the finance system migration needs assessment project, and the long-term financial strategy has been re-envisioned, and that project will be reconsidered in the future after the finance system migration project is completed. The third cancellation is the town acquisition, land acquisition. This project was initially set up to facilitate the purchase of a home on behalf of Canmore Community Housing. After this project was established, it was determined that this, that a funded capital project was not required as this purchase was a flow-through transaction to CCH. And the fourth cancellation is the wastewater treatment plant upgrade pilot. This project proposed as a pilot to test various technologies for future upgrade of the water, wastewater treatment plant. It's now been determined that the town will move forward with MBR technology and for the future upgrade, therefore, the project can be canceled. 2025 Capital Project Amendments. As a result of new information received, there are four projects which require amendment. Three of the projects, three of the, the first three listed above are components of the broader railway avenue project. Following two rounds of inviting pricing from market through proposal request, it was determined that the expected project costs will exceed original estimates. The proposed amendment reflects pricing that was obtained from two competitive proposal competition. It includes pricing for complexity of traffic management through this busy corridor, groundwater management to accommodate construction of underwater, underground water and sewer pipes in this area of high groundwater. And then the other budget amendment for 2025 is the off-site levy litigation. Costs of repassing the 2024 amendments to the off-site levy bylaw have become more costly due to multiple factors. So, that being said, if there's any questions, I'll take them now, otherwise I'll pass it back for the motion.
You're not gonna read the recommendations? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I sure can.
Sorry. I'll, I'll take, I'll take care of it. Looking to see if there are any questions. Thank you very, very much, Mr. Fabel, for that overview. And of course, we've seen this information before, so it's a very good summary that you've provided. Appreciate that. Seeing no questions then? I'll read it. I move that council cancel the following 2023, 2024, 2025 capital projects. That's cap 7265, the NRCB review Silver Tip Gondola Project, cap 7375, long-term financial strategy update, cap 7393, town land acquisition 2025, and cap 7444 wastewater treatment plant upgrade pilot. We've, of course, seen these in the Finance Committee and, and understand them. We had no questions, so I'm able to support the cancellation of these projects. Of course, some of them will come back at a later date, as noted. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor carried unanimously. I'll now move the council approve the following amendments to current approved capital projects. Cap 7359, complete street improvements railway to Maine, be amended to increase the budget by $1,300,000, and that the increase is to be funded from the asset replacement rehabilitation reserve. Cap 7371, railway avenue wastewater upgrade be amended to increase the budget by $1,100,000, and that the increase be funded by debenture financing. Cap 7380 railway avenue water line replacement, construction phase one south, be amended to increase the budget by $3,100,000, and that the increase be funded by debenture financing. And cap 7384 off-site levy bylaw litigation be amended to increase the budget by $150,000, and that the increase be funded from the General Capital Reserve. Anyone wishing to speak to that motion? Counselor Graham?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll be speaking in favor of it. I've, I've expressed my concerns around debt in the past, but in spite of that, I will still be supporting these motions. These are important projects that do need to move forward, and I look forward to them happening. We do have significant debt considerations for the future, and I think we're all very mindful of that, but thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And just on that point, I do recall that these might have been covered by reserves, except for the fact that we had to move quickly on the Phase 3 odor project, and we therefore had to use reserves for that. And that is the reason that these would be debentured. So it's a little bit of
Yep.
six of one, half dozen of the other.
Totally fair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to these motions? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor carried unanimously. Okay, so now we move on to H3, which is the 2026 to 2030 Capital Budget and Plan Amendments. Once again, Mr. Fabel, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. 2026 to 2030 Capital Budget and Plan Amendments. On November 18th, administration presented recommended 2026 capital project additions. Those three included the Steep Creek Hazard Mitigation Program Design Phase. So basically, what this did was brought some money from a previously established existing 2027 project back into 2026 so that the, the design phase could, could start at a sooner date. The Bridge Asset Management created 2026 project for this. And again, this project is moving previously planned money from 2027 back to 2026. This acceleration of the project is necessary to address priority bridge repairs. And then the SCBA compressor lifecycle. The compressor used to fill self-contained breathing apparatus has failed after about 20 years of service, and so obviously a new replacement is required. In addition to the additions, or the amendments, sorry, the additions, sorry. Administration is recommending the following capital budget amendment, and that's to the finance system upgrade. The current system will end reach end of life on December 31st, 2029. Cap 7470 was originally established as administration was aware of the need to replace the finance system, but had not fully investigated the project's scope. Therefore, it is recommended to amend this project, amend the project funding as presented to Finance Committee. During budget deliberation, administration provided potential capital projects to Finance Committee for consideration. Finance Committee has recommended the following capital projects for approval. The first being Playground Lifecycle Kerry. In alignment with the town's playground lifecycle schedule, this project proposes a replacement of a 32-year-old Kerry playground. The new design will feature modern play structures and services that address sustainability and safety goals. The next project is the Cougar Creek Rink Surface Replacement. This project proposes the replacement of the asphalt surface at Cougar Creek, Cougar Creek Rink and the installation of a durable play surface. The Greenhouse Gas Reduction Project will, will implement recommendations on mechanical systems made by the town's municipal energy coordinator based on findings from walk, walk-through energy audits conducted across municipal facilities, excluding the wastewater, water wastewater facilities. Fourth project is development in residual hazard areas. This project will develop risks, a risk-informed decision-making framework to guide future land use and development in the Cougar Creek residual hazard zone. And it'll establish a framework that can be applied across Canmore to manage residual hazard areas. And then the last project is the Energy in Greenhouse Gas Reduction Audit. This project involves conducting a third-party energy and greenhouse gas audit of the town's wastewater treatment plant. On November 18th, administration recommended project amendments into the 2027, 2030 capital plan. So of course, the first two, the Steep Creek Hazard Mitigation Program and the Bridge Asset Management Program, the reduction to both of those to establish the new projects in 2026. And then the other adjustment to the plan is, which already been discussed today, is the 2029 wastewater treatment plant upgrade. In addition, administration has also recommended cancellations in the capital plan, and this includes the intermediate transfer pump capacity upgrade. It's determined that this program is no longer required because of a change in technology, and the Silver Tip Trail Water Looping Project. Livability Capital Reserve Amendments. Administration has also recommended amendments to the livability reserve-funded projects. The new amendments will result in a decrease in draws from the livability reserve of $280,259. The net decrease is as a result of lower payments to the livability reserve because of other minor updated assumptions, including updating the cost of living adjustments and benefits cost for the program staff. Whoops, oh geez. Sorry about that. I kinda flipped around. Changes, other changes include renaming the housing in Palliser to YWCA Mustache Lands Project 2026 and adding a YWCA Mustache Lands Project 2027. The total budget between the two projects is $10 million. Also renaming the project Future Affordable Housing to Funding for Housing Providers and adjust the budgets for both the '27 and '28 fiscal years to allow for the addition of the 2027 YWCA project. In addition to the administration recommendations, Finance Committee has also recommended that a previously approved capital project, the Large Area Redevelopment Plan, be deferred to the 2028 year and the project be considered unfunded. This project was previously funded from the livability reserve in the amount of $200,000. So this slide captures all of those amendments to the livability capital reserves. Just a summary by project. You can see what was previously approved, what the recommended amendment is, and then that change on each of those projects. So that, that was a summary of all the things we wanted to bring forward. I guess here are the proposed motions.
And there's, and there's pages of them.
There's pages of them, so.
And they're all in our agenda package, so we have them in front of us, so thank you.
Very good.
Looking to see if there are any questions before I put, start putting motions on the table. Seeing none? Okay, so I will move, actually, I do have a question, Mr. Fabel. The first motion.
Yes.
Is to approve the amended capital budget and adopt the amended capital plans presented. Does that number include everything that follows?
That number includes everything that follows. It's in the 2026 budget.
Okay.
Yep.
And those 2027 to 2030 capital plans, does that include everything that follows?
So that, the '27 to 2030, like, there is no total number for the 2027 to 2030. Yeah, so I'll just flip forward to the next page of motions. So the second big bullet on this page wouldn't be captured in that total number, and neither would the third big bullet.
Right, so those motions need to be made, and then that plan will be adjusted based on those motions.
Yeah, and I, I think, like, on, on this page, I think we want these specific motions as well.
So, and, and I get this is the way that we've done it in past years. As I was reviewing this, and this is something for the future, because we'll proceed as, as put out, I'm wondering why, since a lot of these are a repeat of what Finance Committee has recommended, why it wasn't rolled up, and then what we're being presented to approve now, is that with all of those amendments rather than making them again?
Yeah, I understand that, and Sally brought that forward yesterday. And I, and I think that's something we want to discuss in, in January, of course, and, and quite frankly, I quite frankly, I, I was following what, what Chelsea did, and unfortunately.
And there may be, and there may be good rationale for it that we're just unaware of.
Yeah, exactly.
So less air on the side of caution.
Yes.
We'll proceed as set out, but something to turn our mind to in the future is, is just, are they necessary?
Yep, I agree. Yep, definitely.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, so then I'll move the council approve the 2026 amended capital budget of $48,176,559, and adopt the amended 2027 to 2030 capital plans as presented. Anyone wishing to speak to that motion? Counselor Fober?
Oh, yeah. So I just want to ask a procedural question. So we have the overall motion, and then you're gonna make the, all the other motions? We're not gonna vote on the overall motion until the end, right?
Well, as I understand it.
And then, okay.
So, as I, yeah, see, this goes to the heart of my question before.
Because.
Does this include things that follow? And what I heard was the numbers of anything that follows for 2026 are included in that, which would make the second motion actually irrelevant because it's already included. But the capital plan adjustments, I'm not certain if they're actually included, and they will require those motions, Mr. Fabel.
Yeah, the capital plan amendments, I guess, I guess you could look at it that it is included in amending the 2027 to 2030 capital plans as presented. But that $48 million represents only the 2026 capital plan.
Okay, so what we're gonna, what we're going to do then is, and thank you for noting it, Counselor Fober, I think we're gonna, I'm gonna make that motion last. Yeah, and I'm going to then go through all the other motions, which I think is actually a repeat of process, and, and in future, maybe should be all rolled up, but we'll go through each of them, and then I'll come back and pass the overall motion.
Because I thought that the overall, yeah, so you put the overall motion on the table, and then we amend, because that puts the.
Well, they're not really worded as amendments, though.
I know, okay.
Yeah. And, and then in fact, like, for example, with number two on our agenda package, second one on the screen, all of those numbers are already considered within the 48, so it's not really an amendment. So let's just go through it, and if we approve that, then those numbers are correct, and then we can approve at the end.
And I'm just gonna speak to it however it unfolds, and I don't need to speak to every motion.
Yeah.
My concern around the uncertainty around the livability tax makes it, so there are a number of these motions I will be opposed to, so I just ask that you call both sides. Thank you.
Okay, great. Right then, so I am not going to move that first one yet. I'm, my first motion is that council approve the 2026, that's, that's not worded correctly, that council approve the 2026, oh, that, approve the 2026 is what we removed already. So the council add the following projects to 2026 in the amounts, and with the funding presented in the closed session to the Finance Committee. And those additions are the Steep Creek Hazard Mitigation Program Design, the Bridge Asset Management 2026, the SCBA Compressor Lifecycle, Playground Lifecycle Carry, Cougar Creek Rink Surface Replacement, Greenhouse Gas Reduction Project, Development in Residual Hazard Zones, and the Energy and GHG Reduction Audit. And so in speaking in support of this motion, these are things that the Finance Committee had recommended. Some of them on its own volition, some of them recommended by Administration, and they have been considered in the number already. That is going to be our final motion in approving the amended capital budget. Looking to see if anyone else would like to speak to this motion. Counselor Graham?
Thank you, Worship. I'll be happy to support this. These are investments in the community. These support families. These support the infrastructure and the strategic plan that the council has at this point in time. These are all important projects, and I'm happy to support them. Finance Committee deliberated extensively over this, and I was happy with the discussion, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is passed with Counselor Fober opposed. Just out of curiosity, which one of those was from the livability program? Counselor Fober?
It's the, so by have, the, having the livability budget in the overall capital budget, it opens up money for other projects, and though, it's because those projects, if the livability tax falls through, some of those projects might come back to be taken out of the budget again. That, to me, that's the uncertainty there, is that I'm not confident that all of the projects listed in that list will move forward because of the uncertainty of the livability tax. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, they're actually separate. If the livability tax doesn't, is changed, the reserve affects the, those listed, and none of these are impacted, so that's why I was curious. In any event, I will move that council amend the following 2026 approved projects in the amount and with the funding presented in the closed session to the Finance Committee, and that's CAP 7470 Finance System Migration Implementation. Just speaking to this motion, and just as a reiteration of why we don't publicly state the funding at this point, and it's to protect the town's position with regards to bids that will be made. If we publish a capital amount, we can almost guarantee that there's not going to be many bids that are lower than that. So in order to protect our bargaining position, we release the amount of the funding for each of these after the bidding process is done. Looking to see if anyone would like to speak to this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. I now move the council amend the following projects in the 2027 to 2030 capital plan in the amount and with the funding presented in closed session to the Finance Committee. The Steep Creek Hazard Mitigation Program, Bridge Asset Management Future, and 2029 Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade. Anyone wishing to speak to this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. I'll now move that council cancel the following projects in the 2027 to 2030 capital plan. The Intermediate Transfer Pump Capacity Upgrade, the Silver Tip Trail Water Line Looping. Yep, and that's all. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. And now I'll move the council amend the following capital projects funded from the livability reserve. Rename CAP 7465 from Housing in Palliser to YWCA Mustache Lands Project 2026. Amend the scope and decrease the bud, 2026 budget from $5,123,506 to $4,863,859. Add capital project YWCA Mustache Lands Project 2027 to the 2027 to 2030 capital plan with a 2027 budget of $5,136,441. And rename the project Future Affordable Housing to Funding for Housing Providers, and to decrease the 2027 planned project from $8,465,383 to $3,318,851, and decrease the 2028 planned project from $8,858,886 to $8,840,629. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is passed with Counselor Fober opposed. And I'll now move the council unfund the following 2026 approved capital project from the livability reserve and postpone it to 2028. And that is CAP 7480 Large Redevelopment Plan. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. And then I'll go back then to the first motion that was in our agenda package under this section. And that is, thank you, Mr. Fabel. The council approve the 2026 amended capital budget of $48,176,559, and adopt the amended 2027, 2030 capital plans. Just a question, should it be as presented or as amended? Based on? Great, as amended then. Okay, so it will be as amended by those, yes, Counselor Fober?
It says the amended 2027 to 30 capital plans as presented, so you have amended before it, and then you also have amended in front of the capital budget.
You're right.
So, and, and I think that as presented was really kind of referring to all of the motions that also came after as well, all of those things.
And that's, and that's what I was wondering, is if they were included or not. So let's just say adopt the 2027, 2030 capital plans as amended, and we'll drop the first amended, okay? Yeah, okay, so the, the motion is the council approve the 2026 amended capital budget of $48,176,559, and adopt the 2027 to 2030 capital plans as amended. All right? Anyone wishing to speak to this motion then? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried with Counselor Fober opposed. And that, I believe, brings us to the end of our meeting. So I move that we adjourn. All those in favor?